I'm gonna call the 2022-2023 budget work session to order. And if you would bow your head, please. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful spring day. We ask that you give all of us up here the wisdom and knowledge and courage to do your will and do what's best for all the citizens of Davis County. We ask that you watch over our first responders, particularly those who are overseas standing in harm's way. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand. One action under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
They always put that royal sitting seat in place.
That might be to annoy you.
It is. It does annoy me. Once again, I want to welcome everyone to our work session on the fiscal year 2022-2023 Davis County Fiscal Court Budget. This budget session will go from 8:00 a.m. to about 9:45. Commissioner Castlin and I have a technical advisory and a metropolitan planning meeting this morning at 10:00 o'clock. Typically, we don't need all that time, but it will see how it goes. If we don't get finished, we'll come back. Jim, is it 2:00 o'clock or 1:00? 2:00? We'll come back around 2:00 and finish the budget up. This is my last budget. It'll be the 12th budget that I've set in on. And I'm happy to say, if you look at a lot of the things that this fiscal court has done, we probably have taken the Davis County Fiscal Court and county government to the next step up. We paved more roads. We addressed issues such as animal control, issues such as property maintenance, issues that the previous court seemed to ignore because they didn't want to get into that controversy. This court did. We addressed issues such as the Phase Two of the Technology Center that previous administrations had tried to get accomplished and could not. We addressed issues such as flooding on Wimpsey Court. And all of those kinds of things...
Windcrest.
Or Wimpsey Court.
Windcrest.
Windcrest. I'm sorry. You're correct, Commissioner. All those kinds of things have their start right here with commissioners, with myself in the budget. Because the things that you value, the things that you believe government is responsible for are reflected in the budget. If they're not here, they're not going to get done. So with that, County Treasurer Hendricks, would you start us off?
Certainly. In just mentioning the couple items that are in the summary, revenues for the general fund will remain steady. We expect about a $200,000 increase in the property tax, which reflects normal assessment increases. Insurance premium tax shows a reduction of the $800,000 due to dropping the convention center tax, the insurance premium tax, from 7.2% to 4.9% on July 1st. And it was 7.2% because we already reduced it for this year from 8.9%. I checked the website yesterday. And the insurance, the Department of Insurance does have our rate properly reflected at 4.9% on July 1st. Occupational tax went up, so that will reflect about a $900,000 increase. And the funding for the sheriff's office is $2.8 million again next year. The road fund shows a state reimbursable of about $430,000. And then we had 3 1/4 in. The summary says it's for Ladan Bridge. That more than likely will, the amount will remain, but we will likely name a new project for that if the state's funding is accurate and they do that bridge. But pressure has another project in line that needs work, so we'll leave the same amount of money in. Transfer or asphalting for, from road and LGE funds is $1,650, which is a $300,000 increase. The amount transferred from the general fund is shown at 3.5 million, which is also a half million dollar increase. As you recall, the court approved to put an additional half million dollars in that fund. The jail fund is going to be shown at a $3.8 million transfer. That's up. So it looks up significantly because the last year's budget didn't reflect the $1.2 million amount for CARES money that we put over there. But that money end up getting spent this year because the state revenues are down 1.2 million. So the increase looks a lot bigger than, from actual to actual, the increase isn't that big, but from budget to budget, it is that big. The solid waste funds are still performing as we would have expected. A five-year plan on that still looks like the solid waste fund is generating sufficient cash to finance its own operations, provide its own capital. And this next budget year is going to be a big year. We're looking at purchasing a $1.4 million compactor, as well as doing over a million dollars worth of construction on a new sale. But again, the outlook right now looks like the, without, even without an increase, it will provide its own cash for the next five years. Budget threats are not really a shock. If anything happens to fuel and energy prices higher than we anticipated, or potential inflation and supply chain issues, then that could alter our budget significantly. The assumptions underlying the budget are that we do not increase any taxes. Property tax stays at 13.4%. Occupational stays at 1%. No additional debt being issued. We expect to pay the principal of $2.7 million this year. Sheriff's funding remains at 2.8 million. Jail funding, again, transfer of 3.8 million. The retirement percentages, the non-hazardous went down slightly, 26.79%, and the hazardous went up to 12% that we expected, to 49.59%. Other than that, we'll start through the details of the budget. First example on Exhibit A is the...
Jim, you want to hold just a second. Commissioners, any questions or comment? I wanted to make a comment regarding the debt. Someone made a big deal recently on Facebook or the newspaper or something about the fact that we had $14 million in debt. When we took office, our debt was roughly $45, $46 million. We had paid that down to $8 million. We were informed by the sheriff's department, the jail, the fire department that we had a bad communication system, a radio system that left them in peril in many areas of the county, particularly when they ran down in the hollows, when they were inside of buildings. And we decided to spend approximately $6 million. We bonded that for a period of 10 years, Jim?
Yes.
For 10 years. Most places would bond for 20 or 30 years. We bonded it for 10. And the reason we did that was the interest rate was less than 2% on that bond. That brought our debt from 8 million back up to 14 million. And I can tell you that any city or county in the Commonwealth has a percentage of the revenue stream would love to have a debt service as low as our debt service. And at the end of this year, we will have paid that down to 11 million, and at the end of next year, it'll be back down below 10 million. So I think it's a very judicious and wise use of our bonding capacity and our revenue.
So at the end of this fiscal year?
At the end of this fiscal, no, I'm sorry. At the end of the coming fiscal year, at the end of the 2022-2023 budget, it will be 11 million roughly, yeah, 11.3. So we're back on that downward. And everything else that we do, we try to pay cash for. And, you know, but there are things that even Mr. and Mrs. Citizen out there understand, large purchases such as a house or nowadays, an automobile, you got to finance it. So anyway, I think, again, it's a very judicious use of our bonding capacity. Jim, start on, go ahead over to the other...
One comment. Obviously, critics can, for politically or personal reasons, attack the debt. All you have to do is read the public documents on Davis County's debt. The financial world realizes that is an extraordinarily small amount of debt for enterprise our size.
In other words, they are lined up to loan this money.
Very quick, very quickly. So it's a very small amount of debt. It has no negative impact on Davis County's finances whatsoever. So with that, the capital expenditures, the governmental funds under Parks Department, I just talked about the major capital. There's a half million dollars for capital repair and maintenance, $750,000 for the Panther Creek Park lights, Fields Four, Five and Six. Fire Department, we got a couple of trucks. One is a carryover, but both those trucks are about $540,000 each. Then there's some gear that's normally replaced annually, and that's about $180,000. Couple of sirens for EMA under the Road Department. Tractor and a bush hog, $160,000. Single axle dump truck of $65,000 with a dump bed of $15,000, with snow equipment, 15 more. A sign truck, $50,000. Tandem trailer, $27,000. Asphalting for the road funds, $859,000. Paid for out of the LGE fund is $641,000. And then your flex funds that you get from the state are going to be slightly less than $380,000 from the bridge fund. The Engineering Department has the bridge that we discussed in the summary, $325,000 for a bridge. And then there's these big infrastructure projects. I noticed that when the Habitat for Humanity million-dollar grant, some negative comments were, why don't they cut taxes and why don't they give that back to the taxpayer? The simple answer is, because you cannot. You are prohibited from doing that because of, these funds are basically made available because of reimbursements from the two big federal programs, CARES money and ARPA money, which we'll discuss the ARPA funds later. But some of that reimbursement freed up funds, and you absolutely cannot decrease taxes, pay off debt, or return the money. So it's not, it's just, it's simply not an option. So it may sound like a good idea, but you can't do it. The big projects, this one's a carryover, remaining 1.2 million from the public radio system upgrade. There's a flow-through grant from KIA to the East Water District of $850,000. RWRA, $2 million. Senior Citizen Center, $2 million. Habitat for Humanity, $1 million. And other infrastructure projects of 4.9 million with, so you've got a total from the governmental funds of $17.5 million. Under the Enterprise Fund, and we call the solid waste funds Enterprise Funds because we do not put general fund money in that fund. They generate their own revenues to pay their own expenses. So in the Enterprise Fund, there's a compactor of 1.4 million, tractor for the land farming of $300,000, fuel truck, which is a carryover. It's 143, but I think that actually already came in, didn't it? So that's there, but won't be spent. It's already been spent. Compost green grant of $300,000. We will not spend that money unless we get that grant. The transfer station replaced two road tractors for $255,000, two live floor trailers, $212,000, a roll-off of 164, which also is a carryover from this year. We're just not expecting to get it that quick. And then in the construction fund, the liner installation will be about $1 million, too, and cell construction of about $400,000 for a total of $4.6 million in the Enterprise Fund.
Commissioners? Oh, I'm sorry, Jim.
No, questions?
Yeah. Any questions? Any comments? One comment regarding the carryovers. We're carrying over some of these purchases because we simply couldn't get delivery in the year that we had budgeted them for. So it, I mean, the money was already there. It was already allocated. It's just been carried forward. The equipment has been bid, Jordan, and we're awaiting delivery, but we had to account for it. If you, if you look at the landfill, that compactor is 1.4 million. I think the last one we bought was in the range of 900 to 1.1 million. So the last four years, five years, you've seen a substantial increase in the cost of that heavy equipment. Commissioner Wathan is the liaison to the landfill, and it's big toys for big boys. You know, when you do that kind of stuff, you're going to have some major capital expenditures. The one thing that we have done in this court is we've not borrowed any monies at all for that Enterprise Fund. We have funded it all out of cash flow. And when I say cash flow, that means the monies that we get at the gate for the trash that crosses over the scales. We also, if you recall, we negotiated a contract with Henderson, City of Henderson, to take their trash into our landfill. It's been a very good, very excellent program, both for Henderson and them being able to keep the rates down for their people, but for Davis County, in that, Jim, when's the last time we raised the gate rate?
11.
2011. So we, you've not seen an increase in the gate rate for trash disposal in Davis County since 2011. Yes, sir?
At the same time, just because you mentioned the Henderson County, I want to mention, because I've had people say before, if we allow another county to bring their trash, that would limit the amount of space that we have for Davis County. But we've purchased also, without borrowing any money, 200, I believe it's around 250 acres.
Right.
And I think that gives us, well, I'm not going to say how many years, but...
Between 75 and 100 years, yeah.
I've actually heard over 100, but I don't want to say that.
Right.
Of course, I won't be here whenever they find out if I'm right or wrong on that 100 years. But anyway, that's important, that we bought those 250 adjacent acres. And also, I want to comment, if I may go back to the infrastructure projects, the $2 million that's in there for the senior citizens, we've been, we've been working on that for at least a year and maybe longer. And I noticed the other day, the city said they're ready to go forward. They forgot to mention their partner, the county. But anyway, that's a good project, and there's a couple of alternatives. And I really would like to see that we make sure that we do something for the seniors. It's about time.
Well, the money is there, as it has been. We have had money promised to the senior project for, ever since we've been here. The problem is actually determining the size and where it's going to go and getting the seniors on board and everybody on board. I hope that we're close. I would love to see a decision made before I'm gone. But until we understand until the county, and thank you for representing the county on that committee, but there are a lot of issues that still have to be worked out.
Yeah, I've been going to meetings at least for a year.
So...
On that particular project.
On the, on the Habitat for Humanity, Mr. Treasurer, I've also seen some comments talking about, why don't we take that money and spend it for homelessness? I think that if you read the article, and I don't know if Keith wrote it or somebody wrote it, but it was about the assets for homelessness here in Davis County. We are asset-rich. I talked to Harry Pettigo, who is the head of Homeless Council of O'Wile Valley. There is absolutely no reason for a homeless person to be without shelter and without food in Davis County. We are so asset-rich that in the past, other counties have given bus tickets to their people and sent them to Davis County. Affordable housing was one of those things that the ARPA funds could be used for. And I don't know who produces a more affordable home than Habitat for Humanity, where the vast majority of the labor is donated, either by volunteers or by the actual homeowner. Broadband, yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just want to interject to your point about the homeless. And you said there's absolutely no reason for somebody to be, I guess, out on their own. Obviously, their own challenges that they have is what is the cause. But certainly, lack of resources is not the cause.
I think...
But Harry's even gone out to the panhandlers and to the, back when they, before the city closed down the English Park camp, he actually went down there multiple times, letting them know, hey, we exist, here's different resources you're able to take advantage of. And they essentially told him, we don't need you, so...
Quick, quick example, there was a homeless person who threw up a tent near Horse Fork Creek Park. Some of the residents complained. Sheriff went out, took the chaplain, offered to take that person to a homeless shelter. Nope, don't want to go, just want to be left alone, left. Came back two weeks, sheriff went out, again, the chaplain went out. Nope, just want to be left alone. And here, pretty soon, you will find out, obvious emotional issues, mental issues are a big part. Everybody thinks it's substance abuse. It's not. It's not necessarily substance abuse. Many reasons why folks are homeless, but later on, when we get into Claude's budget, you will find, I think we shared, everybody understands we're putting some money in there for mental health court. And there was an article in the paper today about how important it is, because part of the problem that we have with the jail are local prisoners who go there, and they shouldn't be going there. They need mental health help. And hopefully, by funding to a greater degree of mental health court, that will be taken care of. The last item I want to talk about would be RWRA, the $2 million we put in there. We put $2 million in. The city of Owensboro, I think, has put $2 or $2.5 million in. That is one way that the county can affect all the citizens of Davis County, because folks who live in the city, folks who live in the county, or in the rural areas of the county who have RWRA, this will help offset some of the rate increase that RWRA will need going forward. So I think it's a very good, very good utilization of ARPA funds, and it was one of those things that, it was a no-brainer.
Does anybody mind if I open a window?
Oh, absolutely. We were going to turn the air conditioner on last week, but it got rather, it was hot yesterday, but it got rather chilly today, so... Jim, you want to go to the resurfacing or road...
Exhibit A, page three, is just a summary of the road projects, because we get it from more than one fund. So this is a visual where you can see the total. Total asphalting, $1,650,000. Last year was $1,350,000. And then the state reimbursable projects are the same amount at $430,000. We also have the engineer project for a bridge. Again, it probably won't be Ladan Bridge anymore, but 3 1/4 for that. That just shows you what the total is, one place.
The, one of the things I would mention also, some of our critics, and we seem to have a lot of critics here during the election season, they talk about and criticize the county's roads. We probably have some of the best roads in all of the Commonwealth, as evidenced particularly by the state and the flex funds that we're able to take and utilize. We pay, have paved since this commission has been here, on average, about 35 miles of road a year. Could be 33, it could be a little more in some years. We've got about 550 miles of road. 35 miles of road means that if your road needed it, it would be paved every 16 years. There are counties and cities who would kill to have a paving schedule like that. It includes paving drainage, it includes paving, we just finished paving Brownwood Manor and another subdivision, Roman Meadows, just finished paving those two.
Plus Covington.
Plus Covington Ridge. And we have some others that are scheduled to be paved this year. I know we get some complaints from people about drainage in those old subdivisions, such as Roman Meadows or Brownwood Manor. Unfortunately, those subdivisions were built prior to the '70s, when subdivision regulations were put into place. A lot of the times, the drainage isn't what you would want it to be, but it is what it is. There is no capacity to go in and tear a subdivision completely apart and redo the drainage. That would be number one. And a lot of our subdivisions were built, I live in a subdivision that has what are called seeping hillsides. So no amount of drainage is going to stop the water from seeping out of those hillsides and running into the streets and then running down the streets. But it is what it is. A lot of people are smarter than engineers, a lot of people are smarter than builders, a lot of people are smarter than us, apparently. So Jim, next item.
Next page is the agency funding grants. Don't use the page that's stapled, use the loose page I gave you for the totals. Total dropped from 949-868 last year to 905-639, which is primarily a reduction in the airport for a special project they had. Plus, there are one-time awards included in next year's budget. The first three listed are actually carryovers from this year that they didn't complete, and we won't pay. There was a total of $100,000 for the Western Kentucky Botanical Garden, $25,000 for Neblet Center Academy, and 62,000 remaining of $100,000 grant to the Owensboro Museum of Science and History. Then you can see, there's a couple for five, or three for $5,000 each, a $7,500, then a Breaking the Cycle Pilot Program for $25,000, and the Empowerment Academy for $25,000. So that page is a summary of your agency funding.
Jim, just a question, and I want to check it when we get back in the, I believe that the Neblet Center Academy, which was a carryover, is the same as the Empowerment Academy? That may be a repeat there. I'm not sure. I want to look at it. So it's possible that that wouldn't be there. One of the comments I would make to you is, this court has been very proactive in trying different approaches to helping folks, and I love the name of this, Breaking the Cycle. We're trying to get to young folks and help them, and things that most kids, they don't even think of, or they're afraid to think of, they're afraid, they wonder, I remember when I was growing up, I always wondered, where will I get a marriage license? Didn't even know duty then. But you wonder about those things, and there's nobody there to help you with that. And the Empowerment Academy is doing those kinds of things. They're taking folks and, Breaking the Cycle is doing those kinds of things. They're taking folks and showing them how to maneuver their way through all the intricacies of life. So it's, they're very good programs. The dental clinic, I'm proposing an extra $5,000 for them. I don't know of anybody that does a greater or better job than a dental clinic. And oftentimes, folks do not equate dental health with the rest of your physical health. But it has a lot to do with physical health as well as mental and emotional health. So it's, and I can tell you that from, from being, attending a point in count, or a point in time count for homeless folks on many occasions, and there would be a dentist there, and that dentist would be helping them out. It may have been the first time any of them had been to a dentist, and the smile on their face is tremendous. Any questions or comments? Jim, would you just quickly, don't mean to put you on the spot, talk to me about the Levy Trust a little bit, and how that money is put into the trust, and why these particular folks, I know we've had requests from people, well, how about some of that Levy Trust money?
Yeah, the assumption is that there's actually a trust. There's not. Originally, when that land was donated to the county, it had to be utilized for young, for young people, young boys. And as history has gone on, and when the court built the jail on some of the property in order to honor... built the, the jail on some of the property, in order to honor the intent for which it was given, an amount of $40,000 from crop rental was continued, and that's what we still do today. So from the jail, we bring in $40,000 and, and assign it to the Levy Trust. But there is no trust money, there is no big escrow account, there's no, no such thing. It's just that, that annual amount of revenue is allocated to young people's programs. So we bring in that 40,000 a year, and we pay out to the items that you see, Boys and Girls Club, Girls Ain't Neblet Center. Uh, the amount we're paying is, if you look, is actually more than $40,000. So, but that's what the intent of that is, it's just, it's just to show that long-term, that the amount of revenue that was being generated is absolutely still being given to those kind of programs.
Any questions? Okay, let's move on.
Next page is summary of the debt. You'll see it, June 30th, 2022, the amount of principal remaining is 11.6. In actuality, 2.7 of that for the convention center has already been received. That's why the court dropped the insurance premium tax to 4.9. We can't pay the debt off, but I have the money in, in escrow, and the debt payments will be paid over the next couple of years. So removing that, you have a, a remaining balance of 8.9 million. Well, the, the tourist tax money obviously is, is, is being paid for by a, a tax from people staying in hotels. So there's just not much debt, the truth is, there's very little debt, uh, that Davis County has, so that's the summary of all of it.
And I would, uh, make note that if you look at the interest rates, all that debt excluding the KIA, which is at 0.25%, all that debt is at 1.7% on average.
At the, at the most.
Yeah, it's pretty low.
Just, I'll just, I'll just flip through some of the pages to see if you have questions.
Commissioners, if you have any questions, just jump in and, and we'll stop the treasurer, and we can ask. Go ahead, Jim.
So, yeah, the real property goes up by 300,000, 200 would be a, a change from actual this year, 100, that's a catch-up from last budget. So, uh, nothing, nothing bizarre there. The, uh, we've talked about most of this, you do see the insurance premium tax reduction, as you would expect. The tourist tax is picking back up, you know, from the, from the COVID, it dropped pretty low, but we're seeing that, that come back to a good number. The excess fees is overstated by a million and a half for this year, because it's the end of the four-year term. Both the, uh, sheriff and the clerk's office, their accounting goes through the state, and they're allowed to go out of balance for the four-year term, but then at the end, they've got to true up. And so what, if you look at last year, normally that accounts about 900,000 to a million dollars. Last year, it was inflated by 900,000, because the clerk was gonna pay us up to 900 for the, uh, election equipment, that was the voting machines that was purchased, that ended up being acquired at about half that much. But we had budgeted $900,000. And then it's up again by 600,000, which makes a total of 1.5. Because of the fees the state increased for them a couple of years ago, it's just generated over a four-year period, or two or three-year period, uh, that much excess cash that they'll pay up. So there's about a million five in here for that, but that, that's a one-time deal, it will be removed in the budget for '24. The ARPA funds, we're gonna, I'll use this as a, a opportunity to, to talk about that and clarify a couple of things. You can see we received the, the 9.8 from last year, or last year's budget. So we will get those funds in about two weeks, three weeks, so that will come in, and there will be no budget for light item next year, because we would have received the entire $20 million. But the next line shows the ARPA revenue loss received from Fund 84 of 10 million. And with that, I would like to flip to Fund 84 and clarify what that means. So if you look at page 31 of Exhibit B, so the ARPA fund total revenues, 19.9 million, half we got last May, the other half we'll get this May. And so what are we gonna do with that money? $10 million of that money will go to broadband. And you can see it budgeted in the expenses under other capital expenditures, expenditures for broadband. The remaining amount of money, or the projected 9.9, we will utilize to pay eligible salaries. So if you, you can claim up to $10 million for revenue loss. When they, when they did their last, uh, their final rule, and they, they changed what, and they clarified what you can use the money for, they gave us up to $10 million of revenue loss that you can claim and pay for eligible items, which is basically any normal governmental operation. We have chosen to use it for salaries, and so you can see, we've budgeted the salaries for other government offices, jail operations, fire department, and road operations. That is where the money will go. We don't want to change our entire payroll system, though, and pay it direct. We're not gonna pay it direct from here, because we pay those out of the other funds. So what we're gonna do is write a check out of this fund back to the general fund to pay the salaries. That's why you see the $10 million revenue line back on page one. So that, that 10 million, which is really about 9.9, is gonna go to salaries. But we're writing the check to the general fund to pay the salaries. And we'll do it, what's gonna happen is, we will do that quarterly. The first quarter, we, we wrote a check for 2.2 million dollars. At the end of the next quarter, it'll be approximately another 2 million, until we finish that 9.9. This just says 10 million on page three for rounding purposes. It's gonna actually be about 9.9. So that's it, that's what the ARPA money is used for. So I know there was a lot of confusion, because we had a lot of different conversations, because the rules were, were changing, that's why we didn't do it quick. We delayed it intentionally to get the final rule, so that we only spend this money for eligible projects, in the best way we can, we can choose to do it. Doing it for salaries is much simpler for reporting than if we had 10 construction projects, it's far simpler. And so that, the, the cares money that we got, and the ARPA money that's being reimbursed, does free up some general fund money for the projects that you're seeing that we talked about a minute ago. And again, we can't do a lot of things with that money, because the rule is very specific, that even indirectly, even indirectly, you cannot decrease the tax, you cannot pay off debt, you cannot increase your reserve. It's very clear on that, and we certainly, this, this money was put to generate and stimulate investment. That's what we're gonna use the money for, and we certainly don't want to get caught doing something ineligible where we have to pay the money back. You don't want to do that.
Uh, commissioners, any questions or comments?
How long do we have to have all this money expended, the ARPA?
It has to be, uh, allocated by the end of '24, and then get up through '26.
Right.
To expend the money, but we should be well short of that. We, I would say 23, 24 at the latest.
Okay.
For all, for all of it.
Broadband is supposed to be finished 18 to 24 months, so you're talking about the end of '24, there's 10 million of it. We've already allocated, well, I spent the million to Habitat, the $2 million to RWRA. What we will actually have is about 4.5 million, that we'll need to decide what we're.
And again, that, that money's not ARPA money, so it's not under.
No, that's, that's correct, but it, you know, it's, it's, it gets really technical, and the treasurer beats on me all the time, because I, I screw things up the way I, uh, but my simple mind says, uh, just a couple of things.
Let me, let me follow up on something you said.
Oh, yes.
If I understood him right, he's, he said that we've got 4.5 billion left over, you said that's not technically ARPA money anymore.
It's not ARPA money, no.
But, but one of the things you said we cannot do is use it to increase our surplus. So, so we, if, so we must allocate it, is that right?
It, it will need to be spent, yes.
Yes, okay. Actually, it's already been spent, hasn't it, on salaries and the things that can be reimbursed?
The ARPA money was correct, that is correct.
That, that.
What we have to watch out now for is for the secondary issue of indirectly.
Right, right.
That's the point I was trying to reach.
Correct.
It gets complicated, it's amazing, why, why can't you go on Facebook and find all that information that's out there?
You probably can, but I wouldn't necessarily do it.
Well, it looks like some people have, and that's where they get confused. Uh, Jim, the ARPA revenue, or I'm sorry, the, uh, KIA East Water District flow-through, the 850,000, I wanted to make mention, that's a one-time flow-through. That comes from the Senate Bill 36 money of 3.7 million that was allocated to Davis County. And we had a meeting of all the water purveyors, uh, there was the Davis County Water District, which is a combination of southeast and west now. Uh, the East Davis County Water Association, RWRA, OMU, Whitesville, uh, and the money was divided up. The reason that money is here is we act as a flow-through, the others are agencies that can apply to KIA for the money, and the money can flow direct to them, but East Davis County Water Association does not have that ability, so it's gonna come to us and will flow through us to them. It's a one-time, one-time amount of money. I would also bring to, uh, your attention the 911 user fees. Uh, there's about 400,000 in user fees, I believe our cost this year, our portion's roughly 800,000, Jim.
Yes.
So, you know, while the state always has said on 911, they would make us whole, they never have made us whole, and everybody is, is putting money into that system. You've all heard me say for 12 years, and since I won't get to do a state of the county, I'm gonna do it here at the budget session at Davis County. It's very fortunate, we have money in the bank, we pay our bills on time. Now, you've got some folks out there who think that's a terrible thing, if we've got money in the bank, we ought to give it back to people. Well, the simple fact is that I don't know of too many businesses that wouldn't want to have money in the bank, and if you've got a business owner or manager who's saying that he doesn't, then he needs to find another business to get into. If you don't have money in the bank, you lose opportunity costs, there are things that come along, and if you don't have the cash to do it, you can't ball money very quickly. That's one. Number two, you are able to weather through some tough times, and Davis County, because of our judicious expenditures and judicious use of revenues, weathered the pandemic pretty well. Lots of other governments, cities and counties struggled. As a matter of fact, there is still talk about some counties, smaller, or smaller sister counties who have, uh, tough. And, and then when you have money in the bank, it's easier to manage your risk. It's easier if, uh, I, I don't, I think as Ohio County, my good friend Judge Johnson talked one time, says, it's really nice that you folks have enough cash to operate, because when they needed a large piece of equipment, they'd have to go in and figure out, what do they be cut, so that we can buy that piece of equipment? So money in the bank and paying your bills on time, to me, is one of the best indicators that you've got a government that's doing a good job for you, or that you've got a business that is, is well-funded and able to operate in the best manner. Jim, or commissioners, anything?
Well, and just looking at the overall picture, again, it's easy to criticize any component, including a total cash balance. But the truth is, if you look at, if you look at the detail, if you look at what's here, uh, any, any real business leader understands the concept of operational cash, it's, it's a requirement of any business, if you're gonna function properly. Davis County absolutely does have a cash reserve, but there's nothing that you can construe that it's an abnormal. It is not an abnormal cash reserve, it's a normal one for the size of its budget. It was not created by overtaxing, it was created over a 12, 15-year period of good management of expenses, and added to $300,000 or $400,000 annually, to grow to an amount of about 12 million, maybe. So it, it did it over time, uh, again, by managing the expenses, not by, let's, just, just go look at the property tax. I mean, it's been within a half cent for 30 years, so that's another confusion. People attack the taxes, the property taxes, by looking at the total bill they get. That's not Davis County Fiscal Court. Davis County Fiscal Court is only 13.4 cents of that. They are, they are, they are not looking at the piece that you guys are in charge of. So there's, there's a lot of nuances like that, our total cash balance looks gigantic. But when you look at the ARPA funds, when you look at the solid waste funds, when you look at the closure and post-closure funds, which are required escrow accounts, that you absolutely cannot spend annually, and you make, and the bond fund that pays the debt payment, when you adjust all that out, it's nowhere near that big. So, uh, again, it's, it's an uninformed position, but when you look at the details, there's, that's not exactly how it works here, so.
I, I think the biggest thing I can say is I asked the treasurer to take out all cares and ARPA money, and we are, are relatively close on average to what we have maintained year over year, over year. And that property tax has gone down from 13.6 cents to 13.4 cents since we became, uh, a fiscal court. Uh, property values go up, uh, I know there's a lot of, a lot of conversation about assessing property fairly. Uh, I'm gonna tell you that property assessment's controlled by rules and regulations by the state. The PVA is a state employee, and they have guidelines to follow. If you don't assess, I think it's within 5%, Jim, plus or minus 5%. Then you're gonna, you're gonna see a state altar down here, and you're gonna get busted. Next item.
I mean, that's the primary, the, the rest of these revenues are, are about the same, there's.
If you don't mind me just piggybacking your comment, when you were talking about all the cash on hand we have. And, and just as you mentioned, particularly the enterprise funds, we're spending on capital projects almost $5 million, and we're not bonding any of that. And, and so, you know, to me, and, and that's on purpose, that's something we made the decision when we, when, when Commissioner Wathen, myself, and you, Judge, joined fiscal court, and joined by, uh, Commissioner Lambert, that, that we made the decision, that's why we did a one-time increase to our fee structure, and it's not been touched since, and it's, and it's generated these types of revenues to where we, we don't have to bond, we can pay as you go, which is what we, what our goal was. And, and what people might not understand, just like the compactor, we're out of business if that thing goes down, you know? Because it's a, it's a must-have piece of equipment, and, and, uh, and it's not like, you know, the other things that we can go out, you know, service trucks or whatever, you can go and buy off a lot. This, this is something that's got to be ordered, ordered in advance and, and on hand, so, anyway.
Thank you, Commissioner, Jim?
That's really it for the, the, the revenues, rest of them are just normal, and they're not much different from the prior year, unless you have any further questions.
Any questions?
So the biggest issue on the transfers out, again, is the jail is going up a million and a half, but not really, it's just from budget to budget. We actually, going up from what we spent in the current year to next year, the differential wouldn't be very high. But, but the point is, we are projecting, we'll have to transfer 3.8 million up, which, when you guys originally took over, was closer to 2.
2.3 to be.
It's just that, the state revenues are, are really down, in the current year, they're down about 1.2 million, and that's same way in the projected budget. Uh, the belief is that will turn at some point, but with no guarantee of when, we didn't want to overstate revenue. we didn't want to overstate revenues, so we left it short. The other de- decrease in transfers out is, uh, we'll transfer a million and six less to the convention center, and that's simply because we're getting to the end of that by the end of, of June. We'll collect the last quarter's revenue for that in the first two months of, of the year, which is July and August of this year. We only need an additional four hundred thousand transferred over, and we will have collected the remaining balance for that debt. Again, that's why you reduce the rate to four point nine. Starting through the expenses, and I don't know how you, how would you like to do this, Judge? Because most, most of the departments are, there's really nothing remarkable about what it is other than what's in that capital schedule.
Jim, I think that we need to probably just mention each of them. If any of the commissioners have a question, then we'll stop to answer the questions. But general government, uh, you know, that includes the county judge executive and his staff and all the things is increasing by about thirteen thousand dollars. Uh, that probably covers mainly the, uh, increase, the cost of living increases. Let's do talk about the county attorney a little bit and, and how, where we get some of these revenues that we show and what goes on there.
Sure. You have a million and four total for, for county attorney, but the fiscal court and the taxes do not pay that entire amount. The, uh, child support reimbursement of that is about nine hundred thousand dollars. There's also of the juvenile drug court, the city and the county both split that. So whatever that, that total is, which I think is going to be about a hundred and forty thousand.
Yeah, it's a hundred and forty.
Something like that is going to be half and half, city-county. So we get reimbursed for that. There's a mental health court that the court has added, that we're picking up some money for. But I, I noticed in the, uh, there's about a ten thousand dollar grant that comes in from River Valley for, for a couple of these items. So the net to the court's really not all that much money.
And, and the county attorney, he wears multiple hats. Probably one of the busiest people in local government that, that goes unnoticed and unthanked in his job. I don't know how they, they do it, but while we got an opportunity, I know Claude Porter is not running for reelection. I want to tell Claude what a great job he's done for this court, as well as the previous court. Uh, it's a, it's a tough job, and he's always on that phone. As a matter of fact, I offered him a, a second and third cell phone. He'd run the batteries down so quick.
And I might add to, to thanking him for his, uh, assistance to us. There's never been a time that I called him that he didn't either pick up or call me right back. And I mean, I've called him late into the evening sometimes, and he's.
And that's part of the county attorney's duty is, you know, when, when you hear me say, "Talk to our attorney", that's our attorney is the county attorney. So, uh, other governmental offices, Jim?
The total goes from two eight to three million, primarily due to salaries and benefit increases.
The COPS grant, is this the second year?
Yes.
I believe the COPS grant where the, the court participated in putting two road deputies in place to help provide more protection to the citizens out in the rural areas. One of the things that might, we might see that come down a little bit is that, uh, or not directly, but indirectly, this year we were successful. KCO, the Judge Executive Association, uh, magistrates and commissioners in convincing the General Assembly that their nine-dollar an hour reimbursement was too low for, uh, court bailiffs at the Judicial Center, and that's been raised up to fifteen dollars. So we're going to see a, a fairly substantial reimbursement, uh, because of that.
And that, and that's total.
They reimburse us now fifteen?
They will at the end, at beginning.
Starting July one.
Yeah, starting July one. Yeah.
And, and that's, is that going to be total cost or strictly, uh, the, the wages we pay?
It would be wages. I mean, they're not gonna, they're fifteen dollars, Jim, and correct me if I'm wrong, that's the total that you're going to get back is fifteen. You're not going to get on top of that.
No, what I mean is if we, if we are paying them fourteen, but our, but our social security, Medicare, and, and all those other costs.
I don't think it's court cost. I think it's.
It's strictly wage.
To them.
It's the wage. It's the way I understood it. But regardless, that's gonna probably save us about three hundred thousand dollars.
Right. Cause I knew we were paying more than the nine, cause we had to to keep them.
Right. If, if I can now just convince them to start reimbursing us, uh, three dollars and sixty cents per square foot for the Judicial Center like they used to, until they decide that they ought to only reimburse us a dollar eighty, uh, then that would be a substantial amount back too. I've been fighting them every year through Jordan. I keep, I sent them a letter and I signed Jordan Johnson to the bottom of the letter.
And, and you know, the remarkable thing about them doing that, Judge, is if, if, if anyone who owns rental property had, you know, if, if your tenant could just come in and do that, it, you know, there wouldn't be any rental property.
I'd throw them out.
Right. We'd all go out of business.
The problem is.
We, I don't even own any.
I can't throw them out because constitutionally, it's our responsibility to provide them with a place. Or I would have thrown them out a long time ago.
Sure.
It would be like me building the house, Keith renting the house, and at the end of twenty years, I pay the house off, and Keith coming and telling me, "Well, you paid the house off, so I want you to cut my rent in half." Keith, you would, you would be living somewhere else.
And he wouldn't say he wants you to cut the rent in half.
I guarantee you.
He would just say, "I'm only going to pay half of what I used to pay."
No, what he would say is, "I want you to sign the house over to me because I paid for it." Anyway, that's a story for the next court to fight. I have fought it for three or four years, along with other counties. Uh, let's talk about the coroner. Uh, the coroner's gone up, what, nine thousand dollars?
Just salary and benefits?
Which is, is mainly salaries. Fiscal court, which is, uh, the commissioners.
I want to jump back, Judge, to the coroner. And I just want to thank, uh, our, our coroner, Jeff Jones, for the work he does, in, in particular with pauper barrels, you know? Because some, some counties pay way more annually than what we do. And, and I've talked to Jeff about that, how he keeps it low. And, and the bottom line is, if a family has resources, they're, they're asked to pay for it.
They're, they're, he, he traces it down.
Yes.
Uh, fiscal court, which would be the commissioners and the, the folks who are associated with helping them do their job. Actually, you see a re- reduction. Uh, Jim, I would assume that's probably reallocation of some, some salaries from other people to get it closer, but it's, it's a reduction regardless. The, uh, PVA, tell us why we're giving PVA money?
That's totally mandated. We've received, in fact, I got the letter yesterday that would tell us what our contribution to the PVA must be. It, this cross the, once you get past five billion dollars of assessment, it, it, it used to be what? One's, one eighty something?
Yeah.
One eighty-two, five hundred, I think. And then there's a threshold. Once you cross the threshold, it goes to the next level, which is what this two fifty-six, eight hundred is.
The, uh, and the city also pays. This, this is for that information that we need to prepare tax bills.
Correct.
So, Jim, is that, is that two fifty-six, eight? Is that a, a flat amount?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no correlation of this and her budget. Right.
Okay.
As, again, yeah, George, as we have said, she's a state employee. All of that is, we pay the assessment. They take care of everything else. Uh, Board of Assessments, you might wonder what that is, Commissioner. We just appointed, uh, a, and as, somebody to hear, uh, any, uh, appeals to assessment, and that's to cover that, that board. Uh, County Treasurer, looks like we pay you too much. The, again, the increase reflects, most of that increase, and it's, it's roughly thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars, is to cover reallocation probably of some, uh, some costs. Uh, and, uh, salary increases because of cost of living. Uh, Human Resources, up just a, a couple of thousand dollars. Same, same thing there. Information Systems Department, two ninety-one from, uh, two eighty-one. You know, I saw an article in there, and I meant to ask Wayne this morning. Uh, cybersecurity is, has become very important. Did you write the cybersecurity story?
Jim Mays did.
Jim Mays did. Well, it had his flavor all over it. Uh, I, I don't know if the county, Jordan, has the county been noticing any of these attacks? I know we get stuff all the time at Knox's.
We do, but to fight that, most of our stuff is hosted on another site, third-party site that, that has the security.
Oh, okay.
But they are very aware of, of, because it's a constant issue, always has been. And they're, they're very aware and try to use the, the current stuff to prohibit it.
And particularly for government, because we've got a lot of personal vital information and statistics for folks. So we've got to be very careful with that.
The good news is, in the, the fourteen years I've been here, other than someone may open up a link they shouldn't open up and infect their computer, we've had a few of, a few of those, not many, but a few. But fortunately, I mean, knock on wood, the network's not been shut down since we've been here. So he, there, it's not that they're, not that they won't be tomorrow, but they certainly have been doing something right for that to be a true statement.
Okay. Uh, Law Librarian, I don't know, who gets that money? Do we send that over to Claude?
The Circuit Court Clerk.
Circuit Court Clerk.
They have a librarian, they actually have a law librarian.
Right.
And fiscal court's allowed to contribute some money. There's different levels, but this is what we've done for years, and we, we contribute to that.
One of the things, a lot of it's online now, as opposed to physical books.
And Judge, I want to jump back to your discussion about the, the hacking attempts. You know, I, I'm a liaison with the Library Board. And, and, you know, they, they suffered a, a ransomware attack.
Right.
And that was pretty significant, a couple, three years ago, I guess. And, and, uh, I remember talk, coming in and talking to Jim at length about ours at that point because it kind of drove, drove home how important that is. But, but he assured me, just as he just did us as a group, that, that we should be in good shape. So.
Okay. Uh, Election expense, you see a considerable drop this year versus last year. That's because, uh, we purchased voting machines last year. And as Jim said, because of the hard work of Jordan Johnson, our purchasing agent, we spend a lot less money, and we have become the poster child for a lot of other counties who have called and asked us for, uh, the, the bid documents that we use to, to save that, that money. Uh, OMPC, the Planning and Zoning, hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars is our portion of the, the planning and zoning operation. The code enforcement is funded by all of their fees and, uh, permit fees, so we do not.
And Judge, I want to, if you, if you address it, I don't, I was daydreaming. But, but I, I just want to address on the election expenses there. Something I keep reading about is, is people worrying about us being connected to the internet. I just talked with Matt Cassin, uh, yesterday, and he sent me a copy of, of the state rules on that. And it is illegal for any of our voting machines to ever be connected to the internet. So.
That is correct.
Just, just so people can rest assured, at least here in Kentucky, uh, that's, that's not an issue. And I believe I read also in that, 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 uh, because it was a lot of pages, and I just kind of scanned that section, um, that until the count's done, they actually have to, the, there's supposed to be video surveillance of the, of the machines so that people can't, uh.
They are under lock and key, video surveillance. The other thing is, you, you know that we fill out a ballot and it's scanned in. Those ballots are kept intact. And I would just, you know, and thank you for bringing it up, but if, if you folks recall, we had a very tight election, one vote.
One vote, right.
And it was, everything was hand-counted, and that one vote changed, and it was zero. It was a virtual tie. And, and the one vote that was changed was, was simply a vote that the, had been thrown out, but the people, when they recounted, thought that they could figure out the intent of the voter. They may have circled instead of filling it in. Uh, I, I see on, online a lot of times about all the fraud that, that went on. In Davis County, fraud didn't go on. I can tell you that.
Right.
And I would think that Davis County is a mirror somewhat. Uh, the new machines that we have are going to be more accessible. Uh, they will have the paper ballot. I continue to see that we should just all go back to a paper ballot. Can you imagine counting a hundred and seventy million ballots or votes by hand? Can you, here in Davis County, there'll be, in the primary, I'm going to guess, maybe twelve, fifteen thousand votes cast. It'd take forever to count it. And in the general election, it'd be sixty thousand votes. It would take forever to count. So, anyway, it, it just, most of those recounts that occur haven't proven the fraud to exist. Economic development, uh, as folks know, we have a lobbyist in Frankfurt that does a lot for us, has, has been very successful. As a matter of fact, we probably wouldn't have gotten the bridge that, the La Dan Bridge Road Project. They showed thirty-five thousand dollars for the construction of the bridge. I said, "You can't build anything for thirty-five thousand." They had left a zero out. We called our lobbyist. He got back, and they, they actually addressed it in, in the concurrence committee and got it back in. Uh, we can't be there. Everybody says, "Well, the judge ought to be there." Well, if I was there every day, why wouldn't I be a member of the General Assembly? I've got to run the day-to-day operations. You guys helped me do that by overseeing the various departments. That's why we have a lobbyist to take care of those things.
And Judge, the other thing that I mentioned to these, uh, several citizens have contacted me about that issue. And I, and I made the point that, that, you know, it's a whole team of people. It's not just a single person that works for us. And, and their relationships that they have with, with the different, uh, elected officials is far broader than ours individually. I mean, we, we know our locals, and, and they know other elected officials, but our locals are also running as hard as they can during the legislative session just to stay afloat. And I mean, you and I have been up there, and George, uh, Commissioner Wathen, with the, I don't know if Commissioner Cogar has or not, but I know we've been up there during the legislative session. And it's a, it's a madhouse. It's, uh, you, you know, and how they keep anything straight is, is, uh.
Unfortunately, you have a partisan government at the General Assembly. Unfortunately, MMLK have folks on both sides of the aisle, which is very beneficial to us.
Yes.
So it, it's, it's money well spent. Uh, Economic Development Corporation, that's our contribution. The city and the county jointly fund economic development. Uh, Convention Center operation passed through. We sent a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to ho- help offset the loss that the con- uh, convention incurs every year. They, I don't know of any convention centers that operate at a profit in the United States, and there may be some. That's a broad statement. But, uh, when the convention center opened this commission, uh, there was a one percent tourist tax or a hotel tax that you could add that visitors through the community would pay. We did that, and that money flows through us directly to the city to help offset that operation.
And for the sake of our citizens, is that where that one eighty comes from?
That's, it comes from the tourist tax. That's correct. Uh, the, the following, our courthouse operations, uh, it's, it's up a little bit, but, but, uh, mainly, I think you'll see utilities is a huge cost. Utilities make up almost a third of the cost of the operation of the courthouse. And when I say courthouse, this courthouse, not the Judicial Center. Uh, if you look at the Judicial Center, you'll see four twenty-five to four seventeen. A lot of that is reimbursable, Jim?
Yes, most of it.
Right. So while we get paid a dollar eighty per square foot in rent, which still crosses my rear end, uh, at least they repay us or pay us operating costs, gas, electric, maintenance guy, those kinds of things. So most of that is reimbursed. County operations. County Operations Center out on on Highway eighty-one, that has gone up. A lot of of that would be, and if you look under repairs, there are some major repairs that we're going to have to do to that center and under maintenance equipment. The annex, judicial annex, again, it's it's gone up, but if you look, utilities again is a lot. Repairs and maintenance, don't we have a project in there, Jordan? Is there a project in the Curtley Annex?
Yes.
Yes, so there's there's a one-time project that'll go away after this year. Thurston Deermont Building is the old Thurston Deermont Fire Station that we we keep. We've paid for repairs to keep it up and utilities. WKU Building, repairs and maintenance, five thousand. Jim, we signed a new contract with them, what, last year or the year before last?
Yes.
The and we're happy to have Western Kentucky University Owensboro campus here. Scherzinger Building is a building that we purchased and moved our EMA and Parks Department into over here on the corner of Third and Allen. So you look at total general government expenses, went from nine point five to nine point two. So it actually went down somewhat. Protection to person and property, juvenile housing, payments for housing juveniles. Explain to us a little bit about that.
This particular one is Warren County facility. In the last year or so, we've actually been expending none of that money. When when juveniles are picked up and they have to stay somewhere overnight, they've got to go to a state-certified facility. And the fiscal court, if they don't have means, has to pay, it's a requirement. Most of most of the people, most of the young people who are being handled in that program are currently going through the St. Joseph Peace Mission. So we're we're paying it over there. So I don't expect to actually expend most of this money.
If you if you look at at what we give to St. Joseph, I forget exactly what it is, a hundred and twenty-five thousand or so. We have started paying St. Joseph the same amount of money per 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 juvenile per day that we were paying to the state because they do exactly the same thing. The advantage of using St. Joseph is I don't take a deputy an hour and a half down, an hour and a half back. So we're we're saving quite a bit of money. Fire departments, let's go ahead and talk about that, if you would, Jim, a little bit. Most of the, you'll see a a huge amount of that money is capital cost for vehicles. Major, and I said, Jim, you talk about it and I'm doing it, but here we're going to rebuild a pump, a truck and a pump system. So that rebuild has gone up a quarter of a million dollars. That's that's probably a a good part of that. You have an increase in cost. If if you recall, we have just gone through a rework of firefighter salaries last year or the year before, making us more competitive and realigning everything. And and certainly, if you look at retirement, you see a huge increase and that's because of the the cost for hazardous duty, retirement has gone up. Jim, did I leave anything out?
That's it.
Which which pump pumper are they rebuilding?
It's, I'm thinking it's one of the volunteer, if I'm not mistaken, it's one of the volunteers or it's one of ours and that one of the paid.
There's actually going to be two that they're going to rebuild in order to extend the life and we won't have to purchase.
Right.
Okay.
And and it's volunteer, the best I remember.
That's where they'll end up. I don't know whose they are today.
Yes. Emergency management, you'll see the the just a slight increase mostly reflected in in cost of living. Ambulance service is our portion, sixty thousand of the hundred and fifty thousand that we give to folks. I might tell you right now, the city, the city puts in ninety, the county puts in sixty. Contrary to what a someone on Facebook said, we pretty much didn't have any choice as to who we used as an ambulance provider since they the AMR was the only one that bid on the contract. Now, we do know that AMR or some of the insurance companies, AMR is Allen Network and folks have busted us because of that. Actually, I think they need to bust their insurance company and ask them to get together with AMR and try to get everybody in network.
Well, the the AMR people have said that they just cannot accept the discounted rate that the insurance company wants to pay.
Right. I I think Allen Network, it doesn't mean that they don't pay, but it means that they will will balance bill. And balanced billing means whatever your insurance pays and whatever their rate is, you'll pay the difference.
Right.
Judge, also, if they have a backup plan, because they they serve Evansville, should our go down and we would have.
We do have backup service if if that were to occur. So hopefully, we'll have an announcement to make regarding ambulance service in the next three or four months. But right now, AMR, we just, we we just, I think the Ambulance Control Authority, Jordan, just received their reports and they are in compliance with the times that they're supposed to stay within, getting to calls. Everybody hollers about, well, the, you know, the ambulance typically follows the fire department or sheriff or police. And you would think that's true because you have about six ambulances to cover the entire county and you have volunteers and paid people out in the county and paid fire stations in the city and you've got them spread where they need to be. Absolutely, they're, you know, the fire department's going to get there and thank those guys for getting there and stabilizing people while they're waiting for transport. Now, on one expense, we talked about, you can see our cost is eight hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. We get about four hundred thousand dollars from the state in those fees. Total protection to persons of property, gone from six point one million to seven point two million, and we've talked about the reason reason for that. That's just a, in my opinion, it's a good reason to show that that when you talk about local government, a large, major portion of our job is make sure that our citizens have access to public protection, that we have police and fire and those people on hand to help them when they need to help the most. General health and sanitation, animal control, you'll see a huge reduction from one point four million to down to a million. That's reflective of the fact that we no longer have a capital cost, which is building the addition to animal control. If you recall, we hired our own veterinarian last year and it's amazing the number of surgeries she is performing each week. You all get a a report of that publicly. I want to thank again Ashley Thompson for the wonderful job that she she does in animal control. If you want to talk about something that's emotional, get between somebody and their fluffy dog or their snowball kitty cat. Social services, the senior programs.
Judge, what's that, on the, you said we don't have the the reason capital projects has gone down is we don't, we don't have the the vet clinic in here, this budget.
No, it's in, it was in.
When will it be open?
Jordan, what's the opening date?
Sometime in May.
And that's only, how long did they wait for the windows to come in? Three months. It's, I mean, things are really slowed down because of material shortages and unavailability of materials. So I mean, we're, we remember how long it took us to do the addition to the to the landfill office building. It took, seemed like forever. Social services, RSVP, the Senior Community Center, the fifty-two thousand is our contribution to the senior center for their operations. Services to youth and children, again, we talked about the Levy Trust. You'll notice in there is the per diem to the St. Joseph Peace Mission, a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. We, it's the same as we had in there last year, Jim. I don't think we exceeded it last year. Yeah, so, I mean, Jim, the treasurer pretty much looks at what we've done, not just in a single year, but over a period of three years or four years to to get a good average. General charity and welfare, you'll see where it's gone up a little bit. One of the the reasons is the Opportunity Center of Owensboro. We gave them a one-time grant of seventy-five hundred dollars. They needed some large screen TVs to to help train their folks. You'll also look, you'll see there's a five thousand dollar increase to the dental clinic. Again, I've told you how I, what I think about them. Victim assistance has gone up. It shows under other salaries, Jim, is that just a a change in allocation?
Claude got a grant for that.
Okay, okay, so now the grant's expired, I guess, and we're having to pay.
No, he got a grant, so he added labor.
Oh, okay, I've got you. We had to account, yeah, we had to account.
There'll be a grant offset that increase.
I understand, okay, thank you. Recreation and culture, mainly the parks. If you look at the parks budget, it's two point six million versus one point eight million. You saw some of those capital project lights at Panther Creek Park. Last year, the county put an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the parks budget to do maintenance on the parks. We had been focused so sharply on capital projects that that we got to seeing some things that needed to be done in the parks. We put two hundred and fifty thousand in last year. This year, I increased it by another two hundred and fifty, so we have five hundred thousand dollars to do maintenance in those parks. We want to give our people and the people that come to visit our community a really great experience in in parks and recreation. A lot of the capital projects we have completed this year, particularly in Horsefort Creek, Commissioner Wathen, we started out with a, you know, a spray park that is utilized tremendously. We have now added a playground for all, again, utilized tremendously. We now have permanent restrooms. I think I saw on Facebook where somebody was berating us, you need to add permanent restrooms. Well, if you go out there this year, you'll find permanent restrooms. And we also make them accessible to people that utilize the greenbelt. So now they have a place to to potty. The last part of that project is the parking lot. We are parking parking lot and and making some accessible sidewalks to get folks in and out. So we have spent a lot of money on the parks over the last twelve years, bringing them up to to where we think they ought to be.
Just one little comment.
Yes, sir.
On the light for Panther Creek, that's where a lot of our local teams and local leagues play and that gives them the ability to play in the evening. One of the reasons that it was so important for us to replace those lights is they were terrible. There was dark spots in the outfield and different things. And then plus, it also allows us to have tournaments on the weekend and they can get their games in, they can play as long as they have to. So those lights were really important and this completes all the fields out there. So all the fields at Panther Creek now have new lights or will have when these are installed. So that's, that was a big deal.
And Panther Creek is where we work with the city and the tourist commission for tournaments that come in.
Exactly, and we have a lot of tournaments out there.
Right.
And and Commissioner, are those are those lights, are they, I had a note on there, are they are they upgrades or are they simply new lights?
I'm not sure what you mean, but, I mean, they're all new lights. We're taking down all the poles, all electrical system, everything is brand new.
Okay. I I guess when I say new lights, are they just replacement bulbs?
No, it's everything to do with the lights are being replaced.
It's brand new, okay.
If there are no other questions on parks, the, you'll see the tourist commission, there's five hundred and forty thousand dollars, that's up from last year at four fifty. The reason being, as Jim said, we're starting to see tourists come back, the hotels, the the occupancy rate is is going up. And for people's benefit, that money is offset by three percent tourist hotel room tax. And just to reconfirm, if you look, the pass-through to the city for the operation or the offset, the the deficit of the convention center was a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, that's one percent. The tourist commission gets three percent times a hundred and eighty thousand or five hundred and forty thousand dollars. So, Jim, at one time, wasn't that as close, it's close to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars? I'm wanting to say before the pandemic, it had gotten up.
It was pretty high.
Yeah, it's close to seven hundred thousand dollars and we hope it goes, you know, it gets back up. That's an indication of just how well tourism is. If you look at the cultural programs, the the one standout is the hundred thousand dollars that the commission granted to the botanical gardens. As you are aware, they bought the Weatherberry House there that faces Highway sixty west. They're going to put a new entrance in, they remodeled the Weatherberry Home, and it's really, really going to enhance the experience of people that go to the botanical gardens. That's one, one of the the cultural programs that really bring tourists into this community. To my knowledge, it's the only botanical garden west of Louisville, and we get a lot of visitors from out of county and out of state into that facility. Airport services went from a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to a hundred thousand dollars. Commissioners, as you recall, I think it was three years ago, we put fifty thousand dollars in to help facilitate a pilot training program. That was in cooperation with Cape Air and the airport. If you notice, every year, that money didn't get spent and it came back to us. This past year, they came and asked if they could be allowed to purchase a plane to be used for pilot training. I don't know what kind of plane you can purchase for fifty thousand dollars, but apparently they found one and we agreed that we would do that one time and then remove it from. And and the reason they needed a second plane was that they got a plane that they trained with, but these pilots have to get X number of hours before they can get their commercial license and the pilots were having a hard time doing it. Now with the second plane, they will be able to.
Right, and part of the reason is is because there's so much service time that's that the plane, that that the plane has been been rehabbed or whatever service work.
That's correct.
That that took, removed, removed it from usability, so.
Transportation, busing services, that's transportation for non-public school students. We put three hundred thousand dollars in. It hasn't been there for that much for a while. We do get reimbursed by the state up to a certain percentage. I checked with the treasurer in the last couple of years, Jim, it was reimbursed a hundred percent.
Correct. And and Judge, I just want to jump back to the airport. You know, that's something that, it's one of the few jobs you can go into where you're pretty much guaranteed a job when you graduate because Cape Air will take you on. They they pretty much to get into the program, they they agree that you meet their qualifications and they'll take you on as an as an employee and they'll pay off your debt over so many years, you know. So for for anybody who's got the ability, whether whether it's mom or dad that helps finance it or what, but if you but if you can pull it off, it's it's almost a cost-free. If you can do the upfront stuff, it's almost a cost-free program, so.
It's a good program.
And Cape Air is in tremendous need, as are all the airlines for pilots.
Debt service, friendly village loan repayment, Jim, isn't that reimbursed to us by fees received by our WRA? Is that offset?
Yes.
That's what I was thinking, that it's money that we fronted to help.
There's a revenue line over there of about the same amount.
Right, okay. Jim, would you take over and go through capital projects for me?
Yes. The the capital projects in total is up ten, almost eleven million dollars. And really, that's that's attributable to one thing. And that is that the revenues that we receive from the federal government programs, particularly the CARES money, there's some reimbursement for election expenses that we got that has some acronym, I can't remember, and then ARPA money, those federal programs freed up general fund money that we.
programs freed up general fund money that we didn't have to expend. But that money is directly linked to those programs that we can't do certain things with it. And so these capital projects are keeping in line with the intent that we were given those federal monies, and that's why you're seeing a $10 million increase in the capital projects. Again, we talked about most of them, the 2 million for RWRA, the 2 million for senior citizen, the million for Habitat, 5 million of just infrastructure projects without specific definition, and then, of course, the 850,000 that's in here, that is actually a flow-through from KIA for the Eastwater District through some state ARPA money. Any questions on that? The general fund, general services is up a little bit, primarily due to professional services being up, and then other government agencies is about the same. That, that pretty much is it for the general fund. It shows it going from a total of 38 to 49.6, but again, 10 million of it are those capital projects that we referred to. So the overall differential between general fund this year and last year is almost a push.
Jim, on the, the professional services, is there anything in particular that's driving that increase?
No, it's, there's a lot of items that we charge to that account. The auditing fees are in there, engineering service fees are in there, it's just, it's just that operationally, on an annual basis, that's about what the account's running. There's no other questions on general fund. The road fund, we've pretty well talked about already. The revenues were 6.2, going up to about 6.3, but that's primarily driven to the transfer in, the additional half million. The state revenues were booked at exactly the same as they got last year, because they didn't have the allocations ready. I will be reviewing that before you approve the budget amendment, or ordinance, but right now, there's no change in what they project. The expenses are primarily driven by the salary and benefits and the capital equipment that we've already discussed. So the toll road was going from 6.2 to about 6.6. And again, that's primarily the half million extra of asphalting. Jail fund, the revenues, we talked about, you can see the state prisoner revenues down a million two. It was projected 4 million last year, but it's not going to be anywhere near that. So this year, we projected pretty much what we're going to collect, which is about 2.8. Federal prisoner revenue's flat, but that's way up from where it used to be. It was a couple hundred thousand bucks, now it's a million six, so that's helping offset some of the shortfalls.
Jim, hold on just a second. The jailer just sent me an email earlier this morning that no major issues to report. We now have 663 prisoners in the jail. That jail was designed, I think, for 699, somewhere around there. Eight are temporary release inmates, 47 are state inmates, 310 are county inmates, 300, almost 50% of the population are inmates that we're having to pay the cost for. The good news is he has 28 Kentucky federal inmates and 69 Tennessee federal inmates. So we have gone, and I forget exactly where he had said we had been, because we had dropped down, but we're back up to about 100 inmates. The bad news is 47 state inmates is probably a third of what we at one time housed. So the more local inmates that we have, the less potential we have of housing federal and state inmates, which is a revenue offset. And, you know, one of the things that we try to do, and have tried to work with the judicial system, administrative offices of the court, is greater use of rocket docket. And I noticed, I sent a letter to the Chief Justice Minton, asking him that please let the new norm become the norm, meaning instead of picking somebody up because they've got a joint in their pocket and send them to jail, write them a ticket, give them a court date. We, you know, that way, we don't have our jails full of local prisoners. And probably the largest population of our local prisoners are people who have failed to pay child support and/or those who failed to appear in court. And those two issues probably account for 60% of the folks who are in jail. Again, you see 330-some-odd local inmates, or over 300. A lot of those inmates should have been taken care of by mental health court, and hopefully by doing what we're doing, that what you commissioners had asked that we do, we will start addressing some of that. Go ahead, Jim.
The legislature had talked about giving us, I know something CAECO had lobbied for, that if you were given time served, once you got final sentencing, we would, we would be reimbursed for the days that they served.
It did not happen. What we did get out of them, I think, Jim, we went from $31 to $35 roughly, and then there was a-
They'll probably pick up a half million bucks, but they didn't do the other thing.
Right, they did not do the other thing, and we've lobbied heavily for that, because these prisoners are in there because of crimes committed against state, that's nice.
Right, state laws.
Yeah, state laws.
Right.
And some of them, we've got one out there that's been in jail for two and a half years that I know of, almost three years, and if, if he goes to court, and they find him guilty and sentence him to time served, we get nothing for the three years of money that our local citizens paid. Same way, if he goes, you know, he gets arrested, and finally, they drop the charges, we get nothing.
And the court system's all state-run now, so there's really no incentive on their side.
The best thing that could happen would be the state take over all the jails in the Commonwealth. That would be the best thing for all local governments. Some of the smaller counties, well, look at it.
It's breaking the backs.
Yeah, I mean, you got McLean County doesn't have a jail. Ohio County is struggling right now with, do they build a jail? Because the one that they've got is in terrible shape, so it just is, it's a no-win situation, and we, the fiscal court, we have no say in it. Everything that we do is determined by the administrative offices of court, Department of Corrections. So anyway, Jim, you're going to have to keep on, I just broke my glasses, I can't see a thing.
The total expenses go from 9.3 to 10.2, primarily, most of that is salary and benefit increases. There is a $100,000 increase for a new inmate GED program that I think the court and city are going to help finance, that pretty much takes care of the jail. The LGEA fund is up 100, but it's just due to the beginning balance increase. I had extra cash left over from this year that I projected. The revenues for coal, if we stayed as a producer, are probably going to go up. However, I don't think, based on what Judge and I talked about, we will be included as a producer anymore, so we may not get what we budgeted. So we'll just have to see how that goes. And then the LGED fund that exists, the 200 here is just a placeholder, we don't really have that spent, but it's available if we came up with a project. Solid waste construction, went from a million to a million six. In reality, we did not spend the full million, so part of that's actually flopping over. You see the beginning balance is 800, so that's unspent balance is carrying over. Then we put an additional 800 in, but we expect to install that liner and do some construction work. That should happen in that year. The solid waste operating fund, the revenues are holding pretty steady, will collect about 10 or 11 million dollars worth of revenue. And while having some out of the county trash, the theory of that is accurate, as Commissioner Wathen stated, that if you have a whole bunch of trash coming in, you just fill your hole up quicker. Management actually watches that very closely. We're not open to all comers that want to bring in trash. We're cognizant of the fact that there's no real benefit to filling it up quicker. We try to keep just enough outside trash coming in to keep the cash flow where it's self-funding. That, that's the theory that's underlying those numbers. Again, salary and benefits, and then the capital equipment that we already discussed are the biggest drivers. But the fund looks really good. Like I said, even out on a five-year basis, right now, the fund projections are really good. Fund sinking fund, it's obviously where we put the money that we paid the debt off that we've already talked about, that is dropping, because you're finishing up a couple, and that insurance premium and the convention center will eventually, the debt will be paid off in two more years. We have the cash collected already as of July. We will collect it all. We just can't pay it off today.
So there's a penalty for prepayment, I'm assuming?
I don't even know that there's a penalty.
It's what it is. We would, if we wrote a check today, we're just going to send it to the trustee to hold. The economic development fund is there, it's a million three, and even though you're showing expenses allocated, because we have to balance, there is nothing, these are not, these are placeholders today. These are not real projects. As of today, we have not, we will not anticipate spending that money, but it's there to spend if a project comes up that you want to do.
And it's there, our EDC is aware of it, being available to help us bring companies in or whatever. We haven't seen much activity in the last couple of years, primarily because of the pandemic, and we address those economic issues in another manner. Commissioner Wathen served on a committee where the city and county each put $300,000 in, raised, what, $500,000, George? And we distributed that money to small businesses and organizations that needed help. So the money is there, we look forward to somebody coming in and making an application.
The solid waste debt service fund on page 27, it's just a placeholder fund. Currently, as the judge has said, that we have no debt, there's, Commissioner Castle also said that we're funding everything with cash currently, and we didn't have to borrow any money. However, I keep this fund alive in case there's a reason that we want to incur it. It's just got 1,000 bucks in it to keep, to keep the fund open. Solid waste closure fund, again, this is an escrow account, we're required to put in a dollar per ton of what we deposit in the landfill, and that is to, as we, as we complete a section, and you need to put the dirt and close it out, just make sure that the money is there to do that, and we do spend a little bit of that money each year, next year, projecting around a million dollars. As you'll finish the sale, close it off, open a new sale, then continue depositing. And you know, we're in a construction right now for the new sale. Post-closure fund is for, once you complete the landfill, there's money in an escrow account. Again, we put a quarter in per ton, and to make sure that there's an escrow account for erosion and leaks and whatever else might happen, that the money is there to keep that landfill closed, so that you cut down on the pollution and contamination, and that, again, this is not money we can spend. This is money that gets confused when others look at it, when we have seven or eight million bucks added to the cash. It's not money you can cycle. It's money that's required to stay in that fund to be, it's restricted completely as to what it can be used for. And the Davis County Health, that's only in here for comparative. This is when we were self-funded. Last year, we had 300,000, as you can see, we were budgeting zero, so that fund will disappear from the actual budget book. Since we're no longer self-funded, we no longer need this fund. We've already talked about Fund 84, the American Recovery Act Fund, and then you don't have it in your packet, but you will notice in the budget book that you get, and in the discussion of first reading on May the 5th, I have added a new Fund 85. The state passed a law that of the fees that the county clerk is collecting, they will be able to take one of those fees in the amount of $10 per transaction, that they, like recording mortgages and some other items. They will retain a $10 fee that somehow fiscal court got tapped with accounting for them, even though the court will not have any discretion as to the expenditure of the fund, other than to approve by writing them a check. So we will get to account for their $10 fee in a special fund with the special accounting rules and a special checking account, and to the tune of about $250,000 a year. So you'll see that in the, in the actual budget book. This happened after I put this out.
So since we have to, we have to account for it, I assume, are they required? I assume they are to give us the details as to how many transactions they collected that on, otherwise, we have no idea how much we should have received, other than we just get their check from them.
I think they can, they could probably provide you whatever amount of detail you'd like to see.
Yeah. The, and again, the General Assembly, in their infinite wisdom, was willing to spend our money, AKA our labor, time, and effort, and not reimburse us at all, so thank you very much.
Since the state does their accounting on their 75, 25, and their 100 zeros, and I'm really not sure how they're not doing this, because they already have the, they already have the funds.
Yeah.
I'm really confused as to how they got transferred from that accounting to our accounting, but it is what it is, so we'll do it.
We don't have to, I'm assuming, I guess we would still, you know, we approve their budget. Do we, is this outside of that budget?
I think it would be incorporated in the budget.
Okay. I hope it is.
I just think your discretion on their draw is limited.
Okay.
I mean, they have, it's a restricted fund, it can only be used for the permanent storage.
Right.
They can't use it for anything they want. So, I mean, I guess, actually, we, it's up, we write the check, we got to make sure that they're, it's used for what it's supposed to be used for too. So I think probably some liability falls here. But we'll, again, we'll, we'll just have, it won't be an issue with the clerk, we'll have them comply with our normal rules, they'll have to fill out a PO that I get, so I have authority for the draw. It will show up in claim, so you'll know the funds is leaving the fund. So we'll follow all our normal accounting rules.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
That's pretty much it.
Commissioners, I thought that we weren't going to get done in two hours, but it looks like we did. Commissioner Castle and I may be able to make the tack in the MPO meeting. Any questions, comments that you want to talk about? Once again, I want to say that, to me, it's, it looks like it's a good budget, it's a balanced budget, this budget. Once, once we approve it, what, the first of May, Jim, it will be sent to DLG, where they will, they will review it as to form and, and fashion, and then send it back to us. Usually, ours is approved pretty quickly, and then we will probably have final passions first week of June.
We have to give them 20 days, so we'll skip a meeting and do it the first meeting in June for second reading.
Okay.
Just so they have plenty of time.
But again, this addresses a lot of issues. It addresses some, some issues regarding the jail and what I see a lot about. You know, it addresses roads, always roads are important in our community, that's how we get to and from places. It addresses economic development, it addresses the landfill, it addresses fire protection, police protection, and it's all balanced and with no new borrowing at all. And I think it's a pretty good budget, so I'm pleased to put my stamp on it in my last year of my last term. So if there is no other questions, no other comments, without exception, this meeting will be adjourned.